Indivisible, the Liberty and Justice for All.
Oh, hello.
Mayor Hassan.
Here.
Alderman Smith.
Here.
Alderman Johns.
Here.
Alderman Donovan, Alderman Jokurst.
Here.
Alderman Rainey.
Here.
Alderman Jones.
Here.
Alderman Prince.
Here.
Alderman Wilton.
Here.
Mayor, we have a call.
Very good. For approval of the agenda?
An approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, takes us down to Martin's report.
Well, I'm gonna apologize, I guess, for the brevity of the city administrator's report. On the other hand, I know that's something some people will celebrate. I usually prepare this on Monday afternoon and Tuesday morning and get it to Pam in time to get it in the packets and I haven't time to give it more thought. The little virus struck me on Monday at noon and by Monday night I had like a hundred and one point five temperature and although the temperature went away, it was a 24-hour thing, Tuesday I was not functioning fully, so I didn't... She had to get the report in the condition it was on Monday at noon. Did however entertain, and you know, the agenda's kind of short, but that's just kind of a reflection of the season. Not much happens in the weeks preceding the first meeting of the year because everybody's vacationing and holidaying and whatever. I did, a home builder of my acquaintance from a former life contacted me and said that they're a St. Louis home builder, that they're looking to do projects in kind of more outlying areas and he knew I was here, so he came to see me and we went around and I told him about the Chamber and the IDA's concern about housing in St. Genevieve, probably a well-placed concern, but their perception of the demand, and he kept like asking me, "Do you have evidence of this demand that you're talking about?" And I said, "Well, they've done studies or whatever." And I said, "But rather than me dealing with what they told me and then you're getting it secondhand, would you want to just talk to them?" So I put him in touch with Ron Klein and Ron's email, kept me apprised on emails and they're setting up a date when he's gonna meet with Ron in the Chamber and talk about that and if he's interested, he'll come back and we can talk about the city's property. You had asked me, I had advised you that I'd gone to a seminar where they talked a lot about cybersecurity and that we talked about our situation, no, actually it was Leighton coming in and wanting to increase the limits on our policy. And so I put out a request for people, if anybody else has done this, and it turns out that Peevely and Crystal City and there's one company and that's kind of what they do. So they came in kind of with just free to meet with me preliminarily and I said, "You know, I can't hire you. I need to put out a request for proposals if I'm gonna do this and if the board wants to do this, but I'd just like to have a kind of a scope of work and an order of magnitude assessment from you and then I'll present it to the board and if they want to pursue it, then we'll go that route." So they agreed to do that, so I'll be waiting to hear from them. It's apparently a field that's developing rapidly and he told me about the, and I haven't, we haven't got a copy of the written policy yet for our cybersecurity policy, but he said to their experience, most of them were written such that if you haven't done certain things prior to an event, you don't qualify for payment under that insurance. And he described the kinds of things that you should, that most, many policies require you to do and he said, "One of them is you got Windows 7 and if you don't have the most updated version of your software, then too bad, you didn't do what you were supposed to do." So I'll be getting that kind of input from him and I'll let you know as that develops. We've been meeting with FEMA. Our final sign-off meeting will be next week. When I'll be out of town, by the way, I'm going to Florida to attend a wedding and staying for a couple of extra days. The, well, I would've just gone to the wedding, but it costs like $700 round trip to go for two days. If you go for a week, it's like 80 bucks. So they forced me into this decision. No, I'm not taking my gloves. But anyway, FEMA, Sue's gonna check to see if I can, if they'll get the information to me earlier so I can sign off, but we're gonna get between 14,000 to 15,000 dollars of income we had not anticipated as compensation for the damages from the last flood. So that'll be a good thing. As you may know, because you keep up with what's going on in St. Genevieve, there was a planning and zoning hearing on the five acres. We did get the survey from the buyer without me having to prompt him anymore, it just showed up one day, so you'll be having it on your agenda when the public notice period expires. That's a 14-days day, 14-day public notice period, so it'll be on your agenda probably at your next meeting. So at our last work session, we discussed the tourism director position and you asked me to kind of survey the landscape and see what the market is. I talked to the state of Missouri to kind of get their input and they said, "You know, they don't really get data on pay," but they gave me some concepts. Talked to Cape Girardeau, they're at the high end, that city doesn't do it, but the downtown organization does, but they get a lot of casino money, so, and they do a lot of physical improvements to the downtown and the person who's directing that effort has a kind of larger responsibility. Farmington doesn't have a full-time position, they have two part-time positions. Peevely doesn't do anything, I'm sorry, Peevely does have a hotel bed tax, but not a full-time director. Kestis doesn't do anything, Washington does a lot, it's a bigger town, they have, but it's all, but other than in Farmington where there are two part-time city employees involved, the others are employed by the Chamber or the downtown organization or, and they aren't necessarily city positions.
Who pays for those positions? The city?
Well, in Farmington, the city's paying for it. In Washington, the city's paying for it, but it comes out of the lodging tax.
But I mean, you were talking about the Chamber does...
Yeah, I don't know, whatever Chambers, I didn't ask whether they're getting money from the city to support that position. So after all of that, the ranges in the low end for the two part-time positions is $40,000 and at the high end was $70,000. I had an extensive conversation with a woman at Washington and she's pretty much said to me, without knowing I was, got all this other data, that that $45,000 figure is kind of the figure for starting someone. So I guess the question is, what's next?
Well, I think what's next is, for me is, we decided we're gonna do a tourism director at our last meeting. We were questioning how much we're gonna spend, we talked about prices, we talked at 35,000, looking like this 40,000 is to go to. I think it's dependent on the individual you interview and what their qualifications are. I don't think it's gonna be an easy position to fill, but I'd like to start moving on this. I wanna, we have a budget that's been approved for tourism, in that budget is a tourism director and I believe we need to refill that position and I want to move forward on it, because the reason I want to be moving forward on it is because right now is not, it's in January, I don't suspect we could even probably think about having anybody start until probably end of February or March and then we'll start getting into our busy season.
So vote in a work session is binding?
No, not at all.
Okay.
I don't, we are, I mean, the only question would be is setting that salary. Now, I can't set that salary and the way I understand, what you tell me is that the board has got to decide what that salary is.
That's the way I read the...
Okay, but what I'm saying is, is we have, we already have a salary which is not gonna be that salary in the budget and to move forward on this position, so that's my position on it, that's the, that's the way I thought we were gonna go, so that's the way I want to go, so.
So are you looking for a salary amount or what?
Well, I think what we're gonna realistically have to, I want to start interviewing some, I want to publicly, first bit of business is we need to put this out, we need to get moving on it and then as people come in or who we talk to, I think you set that, you look at that, and there might be somebody to come in here, Brian, "Well, we can't afford you," you know, but I think that base has got to be just what Martin says, that 40,000. I think that's where you gotta, you gotta start it there at least, you know. Now, we don't have to take anybody, that's our discretion who we hire, but I think we need to move on and start public, and start seeking somebody to fill this position, so I really need, we need to move on that.
We, we, I'm the only one in favor of investigating a, like a contract opportunity consultant? Is that just me to just investigate and learn more about what that might offer and how much that might cost?
Well, I...
I mean, we kind of talked about that in November, we talked about it at the work session and I got, I mean, when we talked about it, we decided we would keep the job description because it wasn't gonna be enough of the, if we only had a contract for the marketing, it wasn't really gonna be enough for somebody, for a firm.
Yeah, well, we were gonna spend on that.
Why not just get a tourism director for a little bit more?
And then you're gonna be running the welcome center and doing that job.
We were also gonna amend the position description, wasn't that correct, Martin?
But there won't be an economic development element to it?
No, there's no economic development at all, it's gonna be a tourism director, no economic development and that's not...
I'd just like to see the clean position description.
Okay, well, we're gonna...
It shouldn't be that hard.
We're gonna get it and we're gonna move on it, you know, so...
So do we want to decide on a range and then if you find a qualified individual that is outside of that range, then it comes back down?
Yeah, the board's gotta make that decision.
Right, but do you need a range in order to advertise it?
Yes.
Well, wasn't, I have a question. Isn't the salary set in the budget that is approved?
Well, do you have a line item for that position?
Correct.
And so you've adopted that salary range, if you want to do something different or more specific, you can pass a specific...
We have a line, we have a personnel line item, but it doesn't specify the tourism director.
Doesn't have a tourism director line in the budget?
No, it's just total, total salaries.
But you have the position and the salary of the position for the former incumbent was established by ordinance, so I don't know what that number was, but I don't think it requires...
Yeah, the salary wasn't established by ordinance. It was established by budget.
Okay.
We've never, since I've been here, the Board of Aldermen has not participated in the hiring of an employee. This is different, I'm willing to concede that.
Well, it is and I'm okay with that, you know, but I want to move forward on this and, you know, and then when budget time comes, we, but we need to move forward on this.
Yeah, you certainly don't have to establish the salary for the position before you advertise for the position.
No, I just need to know from the board that it's okay to advertise for the position. I need to be able to respond to inquiries with a salary range.
Right.
Because that's the only way people are gonna know, I mean, I don't have to advertise a salary range, but I've got to have one. And if we say it's starting at $40,000 depending on experience and education, then that's what you do. If somebody comes in and says, "You know, I've got a master's degree in marketing, but I really like St. Genevieve and I want to be in that community and, you know, here's all the things I can do for you, but I gotta have 45," I'll bring it to you.
Right. I'm good with that and I think that's where we're gonna move on. We weren't gonna make, we're just advertising the position and then we're gonna find out what the flavor is and what it's gonna cost.
Now, also, we talked about, and I think that given kind of the conversation, that maybe when I get to that point, that a couple of volunteers who will sit with me when we talk to the top three people that I find, maybe somebody from the Tourism Advisory Council participating would be a good thing.
Do we happen to know, maybe they didn't give this information, but did these positions have insurance?
Some did.
Some did, some didn't. I think that's also an important factor.
I don't know, I mean, I'm pretty sure Farmington doesn't give full benefits to part-time employees. Now, whether the downtown organization in Cape does, I don't know.
Right, right. So is that a private entity in Cape?
It's all funded with money that was part of the agreement when the casino located it, so they give them lots of money.
Kind of like a TV station essentially in a way, or, I'm trying to reference like what that is.
Well, I don't think we really have any, but yeah, kind of like that, it's like a franchise fee.
Right, okay. And the second question I had with the two part-time in Farmington, is that both those part-times making about 40,000 or is that 40,000 between the two or?
No, that 40,000 each would make, be making, it's not clear that all, each would work the same number of hours.
Right.
But yes, it's for the combined amount. Okay, oh, moving on.
Well, before we go on, the, how much in grants were we looking at if we didn't have a full-time, like, let's say we can't find a full-time for what we're paying, we do the two-part-time thing, what, would that affect us grant-wise?
20,000.
That was the other thing, somebody was supposed to find out if we're gonna lose that money if somebody's not hired by a certain date.
Not by a certain date, but I have, we're, they're not gonna authorize the expenditure of any more marketing money even though the grant was awarded to us unless we have that position filled.
So they wouldn't take two part-times even though if they're putting in 40 hours a week between the two of them, the position is filled full-time just with two people, part-time?
The grant, the grant language says, and I, you know, can't split hairs here, I can't speak for them, but it says a full-time person engaged in marketing.
So on the other side of that thing, 'cause I know we split that grant with St. Francis County, I think?
It's a 40,000 grant.
Yeah, is that with Farmington?
We don't spend it, no, I mean, we, half of the money has to be spent by the full-time tourism person on marketing that includes St. Francis County.
Okay.
Okay, so also, and over the season here, we had a visit from a commercial developer whose name you would recognize if I said it and I'm not going to, that has a concept now to do smaller footprint stores in outlying areas because the market for the large box, major retail stores, they see as not being the future. So we toured and I gave information to him, it was way preliminary, but he really liked St. Genevieve, so it was a, he said, "You know, I've been around a number of towns while I'm trying to look for this and I've never found one that looks like this." "Oh, yep, you're right, there isn't one." And I wrote down the welcome center, but that was just to remind me that we need to do some maintenance on the welcome center, but Gary's here, I'll talk to him about that later.
Also, I'm...
Where do we stand on the audit? I understand it's done, any idea when we're gonna get it?
They have not approached us about setting a date to present it to you, but we can inquire.
Is that with the new company?
Yeah.
How'd that go? I mean, process-wise?
It was time-consuming because they were starting from scratch, they hadn't, you know, they had a lot of questions that were basically historical in nature, but they'll catch up, I mean, they'll learn, they don't want to ask those questions twice, so...
They were good to work with?
Oh, yeah, they were fine people, yeah. Again, other than just the amount of time it took out of a normal workday to tell them things that they didn't know.
Do you think that's contributed to them being later than the date they said they would have?
Might be.
Okay. All right, thank you.
We'll call and see where they stand on that tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then, Martin, how long would it be before we would know how the 2019 budget performed, like where we actually came up on that? We're still waiting for, probably for...
No, I think Sue could, I mean, I could schedule a work session at our next meeting and we could have Sue here with the 2019 budget figures. She's got them, they're already, they're gone.
Yeah, I would like a report, maybe not necessarily a work session, but a report would be bottom line.
Sure.
I'll talk, what I gotta discuss, I'll discuss when I have opportunity with the board and, go ahead. You done, Martin? Okay, that brings Kenny up to the plate. Thank you, Martin.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Should have a copy of the report. Don't have a whole lot to report tonight, we ended up the year with 238 calls, seven eight calls from last year, it's kind of been a gradual incline with us every year, every year, well, ten calls a year. We did kind of finish it off with a bang with a wide variety, we had a assist to law enforcement for a suspect trapped underneath a concrete slab, we had a local sprinkler head that popped in the local building, we spent an hour and a half helping squeeze each floor and we also did have a structure fire on Christmas Eve that we were able to contain to one room, so a wide variety of calls over the last month. Lot of meetings going on right now and we do have two guys that started firefighter one and two, the state certification program last week, so by May we'll have two more certified firefighters, still have open slots and always looking for people. And we're getting ready to start our annual maintenance, which we take one truck a night and go through the truck, front to back, top to bottom, grease, oil, lube jobs, everything we can on maintenance to take care of it in-house.
So you're gonna address the elephant in your arm?
I had scheduled surgery and got it done over the off-season, so it doesn't affect my other stuff, looking forward to getting out of it and get back in full service.
Also, those bids you proposed about the painting of that place, I'm gonna talk to this board about taking some money out of the capital improvement to do that this spring, we need to get, we need to do that on that structure.
Appreciate it.
Any other maintenance, we need to maintain the buildings we have, that one's in very good shape and we need to keep it in good shape.
Yeah, we're doing what we can on what we have.
Right.
We're looking this year into the lighting, I'm still waiting for the final numbers back on changing everything to LED lighting in the building, we've been doing some of our hall lighting and room lighting, but the overhead bay lights and stuff, I'm waiting to get my final numbers back on that.
That saves a lot of money, that, them LED lights, it's worth the investment. Yes, Joe?
I don't have any.
You sure? Okay, we're gonna get something to say.
You're saying I don't?
Okay, anybody else? Any other questions? Was that a stat? That's all right, Joe, we have committee reports next. That's it.
Good evening. You've got my report there, Heritage Commission met in November, not December, the meetings in January and February are moved back due to a couple holidays, so it'll be the fourth Mondays, there's the numbers there on the permits. Rental Housing Advisory Commission, they may meet in February, I chatted with them, re emailed the past week to set up another February meeting if they want to meet, so kind of waiting on full responses there. If I don't hear back from them on anything that they feel is pertinent to meeting this quarter, then we'll push that off for another three months. Planning and zoning, Martin kind of alluded to it, we had a planning and zoning meeting, approved the five acres from I-1 to C-1, it'll be in the paper, it's in the paper this week, so after 15 days, it'll be at your next meeting for a public hearing and it can be first and second read that meeting if need be. The special use permit for the medical marijuana use at 1040 Roser was withdrawn, so you won't see any more cancellations or scheduling of that public hearing.
Clarify that, that it was withdrawn and it was not a city action that caused it?
It was withdrawn by the applicant.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Been getting some pushback on that, so...
No, the applicant, if anyone's interested, the application for the cultivation of medical marijuana by the company that applied for the special use permit did not, was not received, the license was not received by the state, there were nearly 300 applicants for approximately 30 licenses, vaping was...
It was independently scored.
It was independently scored, the state had a third party score it and they scored near the bottom.
So that raised the question in my mind, do you have any sense of what?
I looked at their scores versus some of the ones that were approved in St. Marion, Perryville, I won't say they scored poorly because I don't know what, I don't have any context for what's poor, but they scored significantly less in business plan, significantly less in probably the, it might be economic indicators, I mean, there were extra points for depressed areas, so that was part of it, but business plan, and I couldn't tell you the second category, they scored significantly less, I don't know if that's due to their application or what factors, doesn't mean that they're poor applicants, but they scored near the bottom of the list, so they withdrew their application after no discussion with the city. You're welcome.
But after some discussion with the state?
Yeah.
They didn't fire, decided it wasn't gonna happen?
Yes. The manufacturer licenses are released tomorrow, but they've already withdrawn their application. Down at the bottom there, the property maintenance focus, you can see we're down to 17 of those original 208, that was approximately a year and a half ago we started and those 17 are, they vary, if anybody wants to talk about them one-off, we certainly can, but they're all being watched or tracked, lack of a better term.
So I think it's time to reiterate the fact that all of the compliance has been voluntary.
We've performed one abatement out of 208.
I know, okay, I'm sorry. I remember that one.
Is there any progress on the last one, we just, action up there, it looked like the doors were open, are they working on that, have you been by?
Yes. The occupant has been doing some work slowly, she had until I believe the 17th of December to abate, at that point, due to the holidays, it moved a little slow, I reached out to approximately five contractors who do that type of work, I've now got two quotes back and I'm waiting on a third, a third called me Wednesday and said he was going to get me a quote. Once I get that, Martin and I will discuss who's the best and most affordable and we'll move forward.
And then I noticed on 9th Street, the yard is full now and there's a fence going up and a canopy up there now.
The address that you're referring to has a permit to build a fence.
Okay, let's find it out.
And the vehicles are still there.
Yeah.
All, we've kind of had this discussion, all operable, all licensed, all sitting there.
Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you, brother. Well, Gary, you're up.
I'm coming. Good evening.
Probably tired from that fight.
Got my report, we got trucks ready for snow a couple of times, we did plow and spread salt twice. We had a couple repairs, one of them pretty extensive on some snow equipment, but everything's up and going. Put up and took down Christmas decorations and lights. We went to Farmington and took down the playground that was donated to the city and got it hauled here, we're storing it on old tennis courts on a hard surface. We finished replacing all the downtown streetlights, so everything downtown is LED now. We had to dig up and do a civil repair at the street department, we hit the whole town on sweeping, we did some pothole patching, we cut up a tree that fell on Chadwell, we got all the trash barrels for the parks all repainted, replaced a storm grate out on Roser Street that it fell in. We did some cleanup behind our building and rock area to make it more usable. We did some cleanup behind our building and rock area to make it more usable. We fixed a drainage issue on Ridgeway, we replaced all of the exterior lights at the Welcome Center to LED bulbs, we did some repairs to dump trucks, and we removed a tree that fell in the park.
So, I was at the Welcome Center today, where I have been going more regularly, and Mary Lee's pointed out that the deck at some point, probably spring, needs to be retainted and there's some rotting areas, so if you just take a look at that and consider scheduling it when weather allows
Okay.
And time allows, it's not urgent, but, yeah.
Thank you, Gary.
Evening.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. Joe, is there any committee reports? Nothing from planning and zoning, we got, we know what we did, okay, three minutes, short meeting, I'll tell you. Any public comments? Look at the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I lost my paperwork here. There isn't a whole business. Here we go, takes us to new business. The first reading of Bill Number 4337, an ordinance repealing and replacing Article 12 offenses concerning tobacco with Article 7, I don't know, 12 offenses concerning tobacco, alternate nicotine products or vapor products.
Question.
Joe's got a question.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
It's twenty-one now, isn't it?
Yeah, so, we talked about that before the meeting began, federal law is that it's twenty-one, the state law is still eighteen, you can certainly pass an ordinance that raises it to twenty-one if you wish. My general preference is to not have my municipalities go beyond state penalties, and the state law is still eighteen. So, but you certainly can, if that's really what you want to do, but that, that change of course, of course, happened in the interim since we talked about it and till today, so if you all want me to, we can...
We generally advise not to until the state does it, and that's good enough for me.
And, and really, the effect is they can't buy it, so, and, and I think, you know, the main concern that was brought to the board was issues at school, and so I expect there's not a lot of nineteen-year-olds, there may be a couple at the school, but generally you're talking about eighteen or under, now is really what the ordinance was to address those issues. Thanks, we can, we can change it if you want.
No, we're good. No approval.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Takes us to other business, which there, we have no other business.
Does an Alderman want to?
Yes, you have any other business you want to deal with here? Takes us to the mayor, to the Board of Alderman Communication, so I got a chance to speak to the board. Scene's a meeting's short, I think I'll take a little bit of that time. Just so you're all aware, tentatively, on the twenty-seventh of this month, we will be, Chris Collins, the new NPS
Superintendent.
Superintendent's gonna be introduced to the town, and this is tentative, but I think it's pretty much gonna happen. Bert Frost, who is an area coordinator, is gonna be here, and Mike Ward from St. Louis, the arch, he kind of oversees this park a little bit here. It's gonna be a great opportunity to meet this guy, and Mike said if there, it'd be a great opportunity if any board members, we want to get together and you got questions for the Park Service, we could make time to do that, I know with everybody's schedule, that's kind of difficult, but, I guess, to date, as it comes by a little bit more, we will talk more about it at the next meeting, everything should be solid, but, you know, if you're interested, you know, we'll be meeting that day.
The twenty-seventh?
Twenty-seventh of January, yes, sir.
And will this be a meeting during the day or something in the evening as well?
Well, I'm, I know that's, I don't, probably during the day, but we, Mike could schedule a meeting, I know the foundation is wanting to meet with the Park Service, so maybe we can make something later in the afternoon, four o'clock.
That'd be great.
You know, if you'd like to...
Three thirty, four o'clock.
Yeah, maybe I can, I'll talk to Mike, see if they can hang around, we can meet here at four o'clock or something like that.
That'd be great, yeah.
So, that's coming up. Also wanted to talk about the, this building, we've been talking about it, and going on now, we're over a year with this, we need to make a decision, I would like to see this, the group, we have a committee that's been working on it, and I appreciate all the work you've done on it, but we, we need to soon make a decision on whether we're going to invest in this building or not, you know?
So, I don't want to cut you short.
Well, go ahead.
Well, thank you, thank you.
We're about to get a significant rain event.
And speaking of that, I've invited Rainey, 'cause there's a couch down there, he could sleep overnight tomorrow night down there, and really...
I have declined.
What?
So I asked Jason Crump today if the officer on duty would...
Call me, because I want to come down too, and I'll get a hold of him.
You want to come down if it's dry?
It's not gonna be dry.
Well, that's the question.
Yeah, we're gonna...
I asked him to have the officer on duty check it, to see if there's infiltration.
Yeah.
If there is, everybody can come look at it, if there's not, whatever Steve and Gary did, diverting that water...
Do you have a key to get in the basement?
Yeah.
Okay, well, I'll be in touch with him, 'cause I, I'm really interested in that, because that's been a stumbling block, you know, so...
Well, if you're gonna do it, I don't need to get the officer to do it.
Well, we, we, you know, keep the officer, I don't know, I'm gonna be around, so...
Well, the officer will be around too, so...
Right, and I'm really close, so, but that, that's one of the things I'd like to see, see, see.
That's kind of the major go-no-go question, that's what, you know, we gotta know what, you know, we...
Well, but we still don't have anything from the, quote, the engineer that came and looked at it, I mean...
Mike's talked to him.
We've, and I don't know if it's impacted by the holiday schedule or what, but, slow to get response, but...
I just think, nobody wants to guarantee a solution.
And we've got three different solutions, which, that's what makes it difficult, so we need to implement something.
Well, I'd like to see what we need to do down there, and if we're gonna make this, there's a lot of stuff down there that needs to go, we need to either hire somebody, I don't know if we can do it ourselves, it's a lot of work, a lot of hauling, but there's a bunch of, the, and I need to get with, with, Brian, I need to get with you guys, we need to get with all those couches and stuff down there, even your table that's down there in that low section, needs to all go, it's, and why, your board could meet up here, couldn't they?
I don't know. I mean, as long as, I don't see why not, it's, as long as Martin is showing up to let us in, I think, which you come to just about all of them, but one of the...
I, I mean, one of you guys, well, you won't...
Well, I don't have a key to get into this.
We can, we can, we can make it available.
You want to, so we want to do that, but those are some things we need to get moving on here, that, also like to start thinking about, you know, and I've been, since, since I became mayor, there's been talk, you know, this, this, the progression plan, and especially the plan out on Progress Parkway, there's a road that Dead End's in out there, there was, there was a plan at one time to extend that road out to Progress Parkway, there's been problems with acquiring the land, apparently the church owns the land, but, you know, if, if we're having a great opportunity, I believe, is we're selling property out there, why not take some of that money that we're selling that property with, and at least purchase the land from the church or whoever, or even enter in a, enter agreement, or talk to them about what it's gonna cost us to get that land, at least have the land, because if we have the land, then we can, because if you don't have the land, you, how are you gonna set up ever put a road out through there?
I thought we had a cost for land.
Two hundred thousand dollars.
Nobody had that.
But, that was a...
Several years ago.
Yeah, it was not, we have, there's a different pastor, there's a different finance committee, it's, you know, not the same people.
Like, get a refresh on that.
Although I have had conversations, and there seems to be a willingness on their part to reopen the issue and reconsider it, they're, they're supportive.
Didn't the comprehensive plan call for taking Brooks out, not whatever that is?
Calls for Parkwood and then, and Bosler
To come into it.
Then comes into it.
Yeah, Bosler, not Brooks.
That would do a lot of things, if you...
But the point of the plan isn't to dictate the location of the streets, it's to express the desire for interconnectivity.
Yeah.
And however you work it out, you work it out, but you're achieving the goal of the plan.
So what are our next steps on that, are we gonna talk, I mean, I'd love to, I'd love to hear some figures and, and see how we could work with them and do something.
I think once you, once you have that land, then you'd have a better chance, and I think you'd get some cooperation from the county, I think you, I think you'd get some cooperation to get a road out.
I've got a partial set of construction plans that we paid thirty-seven thousand dollars for.
Right, and it's nice.
But what's more of a priority, that or Ridgway, going out to sixty-one?
Ridgway's a different, the horse of a different color. Only about a hundred feet of that is in the city limits.
Right now?
It's true, but the rest is Mississippi Lime, well, first there's the trust fund that owns the field over here and that, and these guys over in Illinois, I, I don't want, I don't want to say that we've never gotten much cooperation from them over the years.
But also on the, yeah...
And, and then you got Mississippi Lime, we've talked to Mississippi Lime, and they basically said, "Show me a plan," you know, they don't object to it.
And I'm gonna bring that up, on January the fifteenth, I was invited to the meeting at the school about projecting, their projections of where they want to go to, and that's gonna be on my, I'm gonna ask that question, because as you grow, that should be part of the plan, and that should be in helping us do something like that, and I'm gonna ask that question, 'cause it needs to, it needs to be...
And that's about a mile, a little mile and a half, mile and a half.
That's a pretty good distance.
Yeah.
Shortcut for the buses.
Well, another exit, could exit out of town, it's, you know, and it just, it makes good sense.
It certainly would help, I mean, the school would certainly benefit from that improved transportation access.
It's for development on that road, too.
Well, but it's Mississippi Lime, and development is not, they can, they can line it as their priority.
They can make more of it than agricultural, though.
Yeah, yeah. So those are, and those are some of the things, and then also with me, with, with recreation, you know, and in, in that plan, that would, that would be, going that road out there, that would be more of an opportunity, have a sidewalk and connect with recreation, you already got a nice trail out there on Progress Parkway, you could incorporate that, and, you know...
The design has a hiking trail.
You know, so, that would be just a great addition and a help, I think it'd improve everything out there, you know?
IDC feels the same way.
You know, so...
Martin, overall, was it like a little over one point two million?
Well, that's a lot of money, but, you know, we gotta start, yeah, we gotta start...
I'm just saying, that was several years ago, so...
Right, well, it's probably, it's gonna be more than that, but, there's opportunities, we can, we could probably make some of that happen, you know, so...
Nothing happens without the property.
That's right. Well, that's it, we gotta start looking at being four or five...
Well, that was kind of the thought, that, you all recall, that, you know, the trail was the first thought, was, was, make a pedestrian way that people can use without having to go down the highways to get to the community center. And the mayor at that time said, "You know, you're probably gonna get one shot at the church, and they're either gonna sell you the property or not, or not sell you the property, why not ask for what you ultimately want?" And, and I said, "Well, I can't, because absent a design, I don't know how much." And part of that is that, that includes the ditch and, and, and the part of the property that the church owns on the other side of the ditch, 'cause it, that doesn't have any value to it, so they want to kind of sell the good with the bad. The, but I had to, in order to build a hiking trail that would survive road construction, I needed to know where the road was gonna be, so we had to at least get the plan done, that would set the elevation of the future road, so that the trail could be built at the proper elevation with the proper fill and cuts to, to not be destroyed when you decided to come in however many years later to put in roads, and that was the thought process. And that could still be the thought process, you know, a million, two now, you can, but if you get the real estate and you get the plan, and, you know, you could put a trail in for three hundred thousand dollars.
That's all I have.
Thanks.
I would like to have a motion to...
Make a motion, go into closed session?
For...
For personnel?
Personnel?
Yes.
Second.
Have a roll call, please.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Johnson?
Yes.
Alderman Jockhurst?
Yes.
Alderman Rainey?
Yes.
Alderman Jones?
Yes.